It's August eighth, two thousand and twenty four. The time is ten oh two A M. I'm calling this meeting to order an attendance in person. Our Commissioners Mattari and Duncan and Commissioner Brooks is joined us by phone. There are no opening remarks or their changes to the agenda. Hearing no changes to the agenda. Conflicts of interest?
None.
Okay. Hearing none. We will, we don't have a public hearing this morning, but we will head on to our deliberations. And our first one is CUP two three dash zero zero one eight Blackwell Booster. Vlad, are you going to lead us in this?
That is correct. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Vlad Thinkle with Cooney County Community Development. As you stated, this is case number CUP twenty three dash zero zero one eight. A request by the city of Coeur d'Alene for a public utility complex facility to improve their existing water system. Uh, the applicant are, the applicants are requesting to construct a booster station on a quarter acre parcel of land in the agricultural suburban zone. The property was recently purchased in close proximity to another site uh, that was previously approved for a conditional use permit in case number CUP twenty one dash zero zero one zero uh, about two years ago. Unfortunately, that site was deemed to be unfeasible due to very steep slopes. What the city has done is they decided to search for a property nearby where they could construct a facility to improve their um, water system flow rate for their constituents as well as fire suppression needs. In addition to the conditional use permit, they're also requesting a couple of variances to the front and rear yard setbacks due to limited space for development. As you can see, the site has uh, is irregular shape and has two frontages adjacent to Canal Street and then Millview Lane. This is a view of the property facing north. It does have some slope on site and it is partially vegetated. Um, there is an existing booster station on the property. However, due to its age, it's inadequate to be um, remodeled or improved in a manner where it would serve the needs of the city. So the intent is to remove it and then construct a new one. Uh, the project site is, as I stated, is zone agricultural suburban and the comp plan designation is border. The project is within the city of Coeur d'Alene area of city impact. Uh, because the city is the applicant, we did not feel the need to request a review from them. They're the ones that are making a case for the approval of this proposal. Um, as you can see, uh, this is the project um, site plan. And what the building will consist of is a nine hundred square foot building with a standby generator. The applicants need to request a variance of fifteen feet to the front yard setback of thirty feet as well as a ten foot setback variance to the thirty foot rear yard setback in order to fit the structure um, on site. These are some of the photos of the property in question. As you can see in the left upper slide or in the left of upper photo, you can see the old building and it will be removed. And then there's going to be, the location of the new facility will be centered on site. This is a photo of a similar booster station building that the city operates elsewhere in, in, in the county or in the city limits. And this is a standby generator. During the agency comment period, we received uh, pretty much comments all in support of the application. There did uh, the, the highway district did raise a concern over the property lines and the um, boundaries of the adjacent public right of way. And going back and forth between the city and the highway district, it was decided that at the time of site disturbance permit and building permit application, further review will be done to determine the exact location of the um, right of way and boundaries of the site so that the city and the highway district can be on board with where the location of the building will be in proximity to um, the adjacent public roads. Um, this is supported by DQ as well as IDWR. Really no concerns from public agencies. During the public comment period and at the public hearing, we received concerns from the adjoining, adjoining neighbors. Um, and some of the concerns were with regards to the potential noise from the standby generator as well as the removal of some of the trees that are currently a um, vegetative buffer from the parcels adjacent to the site. We do have conditions of approval for the applicant to retain as much as possible or as, as practical of the existing vegetation on the property so that it doesn't create um, you know, a, a visual impact on the adjoining parcels. We support the applicant, the applicant's request. We feel it is a necessity for them to improve the uh, their current water system to provide a better, a better flow rate for their constituents and for fire suppression needs. The hearing examiner heard this request in June of this year and subsequently recommended approval. I stand for any questions that you have for me at this time.
Okay, Bill, questions?
I have no questions.
Bruce?
No questions, thank you.
Uh, just a couple. The variance is not being approved today. Is that correct? Or can we approve that with the CUP?
Chair Duncan, that's a good question. It's not a separate variance request. It is, the variance is embedded into the conditional use permit application. The code does allow conditional use permits to be approved with a need for a variance to deviate from some standards in the code.
The answer to your question is yes.
Correct. It needs to be, yes.
Thank you.
It's not a separate request or a separate application.
Right. And then um, I thought I read somewhere where they're going to build the new facility and then deconstruct the one that's there. I think you-
That is correct. I believe so. I'm, I'm sorry. I apologize. I think I misspoke. They are going to build the facility and then they're going to demolish the existing ones so there's not disruption of service to, to the residents in the area. That is correct. And that is something that Kyle Marine, the Water District um, Director had stated on record at the H E as well.
Okay. Uh, great. So I have no concerns on this. Um, Bill, Bruce?
Nope.
Okay, motion?
I move that we approve CUP twenty three dash zero zero one eight Blackwell Booster.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Mattari?
Aye.
Chair Duncan?
Aye. All right. Item two, MSP twenty three dash zero 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 three. This is Oak Ridge Manor. Vlad again.
Commissioners, this is a request, case number MSP twenty three dash zero 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 three Oak Ridge Manor by Brady Booner for the approval of a twelve lot major subdivision on sixty acres. Uh, the subject property is located off of Bruner Road as you head from Silverwood east, excuse me, west towards uh, Highway forty one. So it's between Silverwood and Highway forty one. The subject property is relatively flat. It, a portion of it, about half of it um, is um, vacant or has no vegetation while the southern half is uh, is forested area. The property is zone rural and does have a minimum density of one dwelling or maximum density of one dwelling per five acres. Uh, the comp plan designation is country. The applicants are proposing to construct an interior road that will uh, dead end in a cul-de-sac and provide uh, access to the twelve residential lots. Water will be provided via individual wells and septic will be treated via individual septic systems. Uh, the access road will be constructed to the associate highway district standards and dedicated to the highway district. During the review of the application, staff had raised some concerns with regards to the possibility of some drainage ways or wetlands on site based on the topographical features of the property and the need for the applicant to construct a culvert at the uh, terminus of this interior road. We communicated with the applicant and requested additional clarification to understand why there is a change in topography and whether that was indicative of a drainage, a stream, or a wetland. Uh, we had also conducted a site visit with the project engineer to assess the site and have a better visual understanding of what some of the physical encumbrances may be on the property. What was concluded is that these are just natural depressions that are, have no indication of seasonal or um, um, year-round drainage or streams or wetlands on the property. These are just natural depressions that are low spots on the property. However, the, the engineer indicated that they would feel more comfortable in their professional opinion to retain these areas as no build areas. So in case there was, you know, some sort of a naturally or disaster or some sort of event where the prop, the property could possibly have um, could have flooded, that the homes uh, and uh, supporting struc, or accessory structures would be built outside of the low depression areas. So the applicant created a site feasibility map where they designated the low line or the low depression areas as no build areas. And they showed us that they could actually construct a residence on each of the lots that encumbered by a low spot um, to have at least four thousand square feet. These are much larger building envelopes because you have five acre parcels. And we concluded that we would allow them to build access driveways across the, these depression areas. What we also determined is that a portion of the subject property is not over the aquifer. Therefore, the code requires that the applicant conduct a more comprehensive hydrogeological analysis to determine whether there would be sufficient flow rate for those homes or for those lots that are not over the aquifer when they drill wells. And in fact, in an addendum hydrogeological analysis, the P E G came back and said, yes, it's possible that you could have low producing wells on these southwestern lots. As a condition of approval in this report, we require that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy on these lots that are outside of the aquifer, that the applicant demonstrate that the wells produce enough um, water pressure, which is five gallons per minute for a period of four hours and a minimum of fifteen hundred gallons per day, or that they construct a, an engineered reservoir on each of the lots to accommodate for low producing wells to meet the flow rate requirements of the Land Use and Development Code. Um, and the applicant is amenable to that as well. These are some of the photos of the property in question. This is more of a pasture that has been used. I, I would assume is farmland in the past. And then the south uh, half of the property is vegetated heavily with tree, native trees. During the agency comment period, uh, we solicited comments from all the jurisdictional agencies and uh, pretty much all the, all the comments were recommendations and requirements that we implemented as conditions of approval in this report. During the public comment period, we uh, received um, two comments that were neutral and three in opposition. Those comments were uh, in, with concerns in regards to impacts to wildlife, aquifer, and additional traffic. In fact, during the H E hearing, uh, we did have um, a gentleman who spoke up about the concerns of increased traffic on Bruner Road, but it wasn't necessarily attributed to this project. It was more or less the impact of cumulative subdivisions in the area, which is not directly related to the impacts of this project. So we really left it at that. There was no additional commentary from the highway district or the applicant. Staff analysis, we, the, we believe that the proposed density and sizes are consistent with the existing development pattern in the area. The applicant must comply with the agency requirements and they must build infrastructure improvements uh, to associate highway district standards. Yeah, the hearing examiner heard this request, I believe, last month and subsequently recommended approval. I stand for any questions that you have. I'm sorry, July eighteenth.
Bill, questions?
I'm just curious. Uh, this is only twelve units. Would we treat it the same way if it were twelve hundred units? Would we look at it the same way from an environmental perspective, the phases of, of development, the expansion of infrastructure?
Pat Brayden, Deputy Prosecutor, I can try to answer that. Um, I think the answer is the standards we look at are the same, but each application is unique. I mean, a twelve, hypothetical twelve hundred uh, lot subdivision, you know, which would probably be, you know, proposed as a planned unit development as well as a subdivision. You'd probably face different subdivisions throughout. Um, you know, that could fit in one part of the county and, and not fit at all in another part of the county. So it's just, you know, each.
Well, my question was geared more towards the fact that, you know, twelve units, no big deal.
Right.
You know, it's not going to affect the road traffic that much, but a hundred twelve unit developments will, right? And so, you know-
Over time, yes.
Yes, over time. And so where are those, where are those points in time where we say, you know, whoops? You know, we, we've hit, we've hit enough and now we, we're going to demand more. Yes.
Here's David Callahan, Community Development Director. That in, at least in theory, is why we send out referrals. The various agencies should be telling us that they have concerns based on what you just said. Interestingly, in my almost eleven years here, I haven't actually seen that yet.
Mm-hmm. I'm just wondering if there isn't anything more that we can do to kind of illustrate that fact to these other agencies? I mean, the sheriff responded and said, you know, I uh, it is the recommendation, recommendation of the office that Community Development and the Board of County Commissioners properly assess the cost of the new development to the county and the infrastructure requirements for proper public safety. Well, twelve is not necessarily enough to really, you know, to, 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 to see that as a concern. So how do we go about properly um, assessing the cost of this new development? You know, in the bigger picture of things? And that's why I asked the question, twelve hundred units versus twelve. If it was twelve hundred units, we would be looking at it, I think, much more differently from a single application as far as how will that affect county services versus the twelve? And so how do we go about as a, as a commissioner, a board, making that assessment on these smaller subdivisions? Because in essence, it's no different than the, the, the old, uh, I believe it was Chinese saying of death by a thousand cuts.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
You know, and so we have to know, well, you know, how, how do we manage to that?
At the moment, we are relying on other agencies to tell us.
Mm-hmm. Is there more that we could do to uh, to kind of demand from them or show them from our perspective that, you know, th- this area, this region can, can handle so much development based upon current zoning? And therefore, you know, we're, we're reaching full, if you will?
I, well, I just, I think it's a multifaceted answer to a very good question. Um, one of the, one of those is the impact, you know, to help mitigate the effects of any development at any level would be impact fees, which we're working on.
And have been for quite some time.
You know, as you're saying, working with the agencies to get that kind of data because they're the ones that are closest to the ground as far as-
Yeah.
-a lot of this, including our own agencies like the Sheriff's Office, Solid Waste, that kind of thing. And um, you know, co, you know, continuing uh, comprehensive planning efforts, which we're also starting to do.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, you know, and trying to do that in as data-driven a manner as possible so we can, you know, appropriately plan and then zone-
Yeah.
-according to what those capacities, we think those capacities are. So it, it's not a simple answer and it's going to obviously take time. But I think, you know, I think the, the end result of that is going to be very um, instructive in, you know, gi- giving the commissioners an ult, you know, at that time, an ultimate-
Yeah.
A, a better, at least a lot better answer to that question.
I understand. And I think the challenge sometimes is the fact that, you know, we're, you know, one of the beauties of Idaho is the fact that we're very decentralized in our government and taxing, which is a good thing in many respects. But what makes it difficult is, you know, you have a, a person who is concerned about the traffic on the road. He said, not necessarily this development, but all these future developments, right? Well, the highway district is really more responsible for how that's managed with the width of the road and, and some of the safety features that can be built. It's not really our purview, per se. But we still play a role in that. And so my question is really, you know, more, you know, rhetorical is what, what can we do instead of just sending out an email saying, does this, does this thing affect you? Because the school district doesn't seem to have any thresholds. The highway district doesn't seem to have any thresholds when they say, you know, now we need to at least have a, an exit and entrance lane, you know? If we were seeking twelve hundred units, we, they, they would almost demand that, you know, for every little tiny subdivision out of a twelve hundred unit. But they're not individually. And that's where my questions are geared towards because I think that person who made that comment, I'm concerned about traffic in the future. You know, we're, we're presented with this and all indicators, all indicators suggest that we should be approving this. There's no reason not to. But this is another straw on the proverbial camel's back. And we do nothing to look at the bigger picture. And that's why I ask, what can we do as a county to ensure that we're helping to get that word out, to manage that, hey, we're getting fuller here, it's stretching our services? Sheriff's Office already said their services are stretched.
Agreed. I, I would be so bold as to say, this is the very thing needs to be hotly debated as part of the comprehensive plan update. And we need to pull in our agencies as part of that debate.
Yeah.
Because so far, they have refused to tell us anything frankly, useful on these kinds of things.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mattari, I, I can actually provide further clarification to your question. We actually are doing something. We have a project currently on hold because of the cumulative impact of the request along with the adjoining subdivisions that were approved around the same time. Uh, I don't know if I can name it, but if I may, I can name the project. And it's been on hold for close to a year, if not more, because the highway district has said that the cumulative impact of the numerous minor subdivisions and major subdivisions has led him to require a comprehensive traffic study to assess the impacts and tri distribution analysis uh, for all the controlled and non-controlled intersections adjacent to the project. And it's been on hold for over a year. And we have not allowed the applicant to move forward until that has come to a resolution. And, and the highway district has a, you know, a bullet list of requirements for improvements of adjacent roads. And if I may, I can actually name the project.
I don't think it's necessary, Vlad.
You're talking about a development project, not-
Correct.
Not an internal county project.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's the concern. You know, we get these individually and uh, I just keep asking myself, well, how does that fit into the bigger picture? And uh, what is that going to look like? And are we going to uh, increase the burden on the existing property owners to have to pay for that infrastructure because it wasn't demanded in these developments and the widening of the roads and, and the uh, you know, the additional services that are going to be required? Those are my questions.
At some point, that is assuredly going to be a huge issue.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's, it's easier now because it's not a huge issue.
Good to get in front of it now if we can.
Yeah. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Sorry. Bill, thoughts on the project?
Yes, um, I uh, we've done a number of these over the years. And one of the things that occurs to me is, there's a project that I may be in favor of and think does not put strain on the road or the this or the that. And uh, you two may disagree. That's why we have three commissioners to make these judgments. We don't act as a unilateral uh, authority where we have to move unanimously. And a lot of good information and uh, questions come out when uh, when, when one commissioner might have uh, questions about it, but the other two don't or it doesn't occur to them. So I, I think we need to remember that, that we are three judges here that are deciding whether this is a worthy project or impactful project. Not, we don't have to, we don't have to agree. And sometimes it's honestly better if we don't.
Bruce?
Oh, I'm done.
But I mean, you're-
Oh.
You're going to approve the project? I mean, this is our deliberation.
Yeah, I don't see a reason to not approve it based upon the information. There's certainly some conditions, but I think it would be helpful uh, if we can start finding ways where we can see how this fits into the bigger picture and what these triggers are for, you know, what, when should we be saying no? I mean, we already know that we have county services that are stretched uh, you know, beyond what would be a reasonable amount. And uh, some of that we're fixing. But I don't see that really being looked at seriously because we know that these are just like little marbles going on one side of a scale. And eventually it's going to tip it. And that kind of reactionary situation. And for anyone who's lived in a community that's grown, uh, there's no such thing as widening a road and it'll be fixed. It's a perpetual state of construction. It, it, it greatly diminishes the quality of life for people for many, many years. So that, that's what I would like to kind of see moving forward. But I see no reason to say no to this based upon the density that's in that area, the fact that it's within the five acre minimum lot size. It's within the comp plan. Uh, there's no reason.
Yeah, and the availability of land to continue to be divided in just this particular area into five acres is not very much. It's not twelve hundred homes for sure. But uh, no, I, I think, you know, you've hit on something that we do need a broader picture. Um, you know, you just take the schools. Well, they were experiencing um, being at capacity a couple of years ago, but now enrollment's down. So now they have capacity for- capacity a couple of years ago, but now enrollment's down, so now they have capacity for future developments, you know, where that scale tips again? I don't know, but I think it's a good idea to invite, invite all these agencies to be involved in the comp plan to find out where their particular balance point is going to be.
Yeah, my fear is that they don't have that and nor will they ever have it. And so then the question becomes, what can we do, you know, within our purview to manage to that? Because I don't expect, the, the way that they do their, their analysis, it, it seems to be very elementary a lot of times, you know? Yeah, no, I think they're looking at it from this particular project doesn't affect us because it's not enough to affect us. They just do it a hundred times and they, they, they've missed the bigger picture. And I think that there is, you know, if we were to, to start with the end game of what would the county look like if it were developed? Let's just say five acre lots, what would we need? And then at what point would we need to start making these expansions? Cause a certain number of homes have been developed in this particular region. We know that, that, that triggers that the roads need to be widened or something else has to happen. And that's usually how it's done, you know, on, on a more private sector side is start at the end and work your way backwards and that'll tell you where your trip wires are, if you will. And we just haven't done that and it seems prudent that we should be.
Agreed.
So anyhow, uh, I move that we approve MSP two-three dash zero-zero-zero-three. Oak Ridge Manor.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right. That passes and our third item, which is under business, is request for public hearing for CUP dash two-four dash zero-zero-zero-three and this is Trecker Ridge Wireless Tower.
Commissioners, for the record, once again Vlad Finkel with Cooney County Community Development. Um, you do have it in your packet, you do have a request for a public hearing from one of the adjacent property owners. However, that individual did not provide a reason as to why they're requesting a public hearing. Um, I could provide some explanation if you so desire.
I honestly was not real clear, uh, because the documentation was very limited in our packet as to what was really behind this, what was driving this. I believe there's some claims of a, a private road that may be on my property, may not be on my property.
Correct.
For, uh, proposed cell tower, I, I presume, but.
Yes, that, that is correct. In a nutshell, you're correct and, but if you want, I can provide some additional level of detail to clarify.
I would appreciate that.
Commissioners, uh, I surmise that the reason for requesting a public hearing is based on the oral testimony that was presented at the public hearing, uh, by one of the adjacent property owners. And this is stemming from a claim by the adjacent property owners, husband and wife, who have said that they believe a portion of a private road provides, that provides access to the cell tower is trespassing onto their land. They have submitted into the record two different easements to. To suggest that those easements give physical and legal access to the cell tower, um, property owner to access through their site. However, in those documents, in the easements, the neighbor failed to provide a record of survey that would show the geographical area of the road where it trespasses through their land. We have asked for them to do that numerously and they said that they, they, they declined to do that because they don't have a survey and they don't have the money to do that. We have communicated with our legal counsel and we were advised that the legal access easement, the, the mere fact of submitting a, a, a legal access easement does not indicate or prove the physical location of the road in a certain geographical area, if that makes sense. Perhaps, uh, Pat Braden could clarify in that regard.
Mr. Finkel was correct, even, even if the, um, you know, a deed granting an easement has specific meets and bounds, you know, the, that, um, those points and those lines and curves would, um, need to be confirmed through a survey as to where they physically are on the ground. There is a survey in the record that indicates, I don't want to get too much in the weeds of this, but indicates that the access road does not cross onto the Kramer property. Kramer's claimed that it does, uh, but they don't, as Mr. Finkel said, there, there is not a survey that they've sus- uh, submitted that, that, um, backs that up. So, and, uh, I don't know if Mr. Finkel was going to get to this, but, uh, legal counsel for the applicant did submit a letter this morning, um, objecting to the, uh, request uh, for, for the reasons Mr. Finkel gi- gave and because he contends that it would violate the FCC shot clock order in terms of how much time we have to come to a decision on this. So, um, with that, and Mr. Kramer's, did say that, he said his title company is providing us more information, but, so there's that on the other side. I don't know if that's going to be enough to warrant another public hearing or not. They did have an opportunity to provide, provide that kind of information, um, at the, at the me- at the hearing before the hearing exam.
And, and beforehand as well. We have asked them at least on two or three different occasions to submit a record of survey that would show the location. And this is the location where there, this, where there's this band. Uh, this is Stimson property and this is the adjoining property. And there's, uh, there, there's a claim that this road actually trespasses onto the adjoining property, but the, the record of survey and a statement from the land, uh, surveyor that the applicants have hired in states on record that the road is, in its entirety, is within the property, the Stimson lumber property who has granted access easement to the applicant. We don't have any indication other than the claim, the verbal claim that the neighbors are making that the road is trespassing through their parcel.
Just out of curiosity with, um, without the survey from the, uh, property owner, what would the public hearing in essence be debating?
Can you repeat the question again?
Well, without the survey from the, uh, the person who owns the property claiming that the road goes through their property, what would the public hearing be for?
Absolutely for nothing, but I, I, I don't know if that's appropriate for me to state because I don't know what else the app, the neighbor would bring to light at the hearing. I, I don't want to put myself in position where I'm.
Well, I, I will put myself in that position. I don't think there would be a reason for, for the hearing but for the, the claim regarding the, uh, where the access road.
So without this, uh, survey, it would be largely an unsubstantiated claim at that point?
Yes.
Correct. And they do not have a, a survey as, as of the last communication with, we had with them. I don't know what a title company could do for them, um, unless they have hired a, a land surveyor to survey the road and the property boundaries.
If we don't have a hearing, then you bring it back before us, uh, for deliberations?
Yes.
Well, actually we could deliberate, you can deliberate on the matter today. I can go through the project.
It's not, it's not.
No.
Not in deliberations, it's under business.
Yeah.
Pat, can you, is it correct to say that if the board chooses to move forward deliberations on another date, that the applicant still has an op- or excuse me, the neighbors still have an opportunity to request a reconsideration upon a final decision?
It's possible.
And then in the meantime, maybe they can bring this proof and then you can.
I mean, if they had a scheduled survey or something, I, I would be more open to it, but I don't even think, uh, uh, no evidence that should suggest they've done anything. So I'm inclined to say no at this point in time.
So there's still time because once the deliberations is scheduled, they still have that time to get the information to you.
True.
So if, if, please correct me, uh, if I'm not understanding you. What you're saying is you're going to set a deliberations date. We need to contact the neighbor and say, the board has declined to conduct a public hearing, you're going to deliberate on the matter on such and such date. If you submit a survey, we will bring it forth and then the board will decide whether they want to reopen it for a public hearing?
Well, they would have to request reconsideration.
They can't request a public hearing again?
Yeah.
Got it.
And they would request reconsideration based on the survey that proves what they believe.
Following a formal decision.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But couldn't we, the commissioners, decide that we want a public hearing if evidence is presented before the deliberations?
You could do that.
Okay. So would you like a formal motion to deny the request?
Yes, please.
I move that we deny the request for the public hearing, CUP two-four dash zero-zero-zero-three, Trecker Ridge, WCF.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Matarri.
Aye.
Chair Duncan.
Aye. All right. Ten forty-two, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioners.